Okay, it's four thirty. I call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the District of Taffino operates within the territory of local First Nation. Notice to attendees, the meeting is being video recorded and will be published in the district. Notice to virtual attendees to sign up for public comments and question period using the Q and A function Zoom. To register, participants are required to enter their full name, residential address, and the agenda item they wish to speak to. Through unanimous consent, if there is no, are no objections, I'll move that pursuit to section fifteen of the District of Taffino meeting procedure by law number one two two nine twenty sixteen is amended. The August twelfth, twenty twenty five regular meeting be held electronically via Zoom and live broadcasted on the District of Taffino's YouTube channel. That the facility provided for the public to watch and hear the meeting be located at Clay Quot Sound Community Theater three eight zero Campbell Street. In Taffino B C. Seeing no objection, that motion is carried. Also through unanimous consent, if there are no objections, I'll move that the August twelfth, twenty twenty five regular council agenda be adopted. The no objection line. The consent agenda. Also through unanimous consent, if there are no objections, I'll move that items four point one to four point five of the consent agenda on the regular council meeting. August twelfth, twenty twenty five be approved and received. Seeing objection, that motion is carried. Mayor's reports, the only thing on my report is T F N days. It's a great time. Lots of bouncy castles. It was wonderful to see local leadership. In that role and it was also a pleasure to. To raise the three flags, Canadian. Flag, the province of B C flag and the local First Nation flag here on. Item seven, public comment on the agenda item, Mr. McCall.
Thank you, Mayor Law. I will now do an open call for comments. For those in the gallery who wish to speak, please raise your hand. And if there is anyone online attending via Zoom. Would like to make a comment, you can do so now using Q and A function. Before making a comment, you will need to state your name, your address, and the agenda item you are speaking to. I will now do a open call, calling once. Calling twice. Calling three times. No. Oh, there is one public comment from Mr. John Borsette. So I will unmute John and I will ask him to state his name, his address in the agenda item he is speaking to. Is it Borsette? All right, Mr. Borsette, can you hear us? Mr. Borsette. I'll ask Mr. Borsette to unmute, just awaiting his reply. We've lost Mr. Borsette.
We'll give him another minute. Mr. Borsette, can you hear us? About to talk.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I hadn't gotten the unmute selection button, apologies.
Just a reminder, just to state your name, your address, and the agenda item. You wish to speak to, you get two minutes.
For sure. My name is John Borsette. I represent Wismer Holding, address seven seven nine Blackberry Avenue in Victoria. And I'm speaking to item ten point three on the agenda regarding the rezoning of eight two five Campbell Street for the amendment to the O C P. I'd like to just take a moment to extend our thanks to the Taffino Council and district staff for their dedication, professionalism. And collaborative spirit through the rezoning process for phase one of our development project. Your team has demonstrated a deep understanding of the unique character of Taffino and the importance of sustainable development. We're grateful for the time that was provided to guide us through each step with clarity and care. As we move into subsequent phases of the project, we're excited to continue working alongside you to build something that reflects. The spirit of this remarkable place and contribute meaningfully to its future. Thank you again for your time, your insights, and your partnership, and we look forward to what's ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Borsette. Let's make sure nobody else is on, online wanting to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Law. I'll do one more open phone, calling once. Calling twice. Calling three times. No other comments this time.
Okay, we're going to move on to item nine point one, corresponding ministry's housing news affairs regarding bill three five update approval. And this is just the overall. Cabinet approval. Any comments from council? Nine point two corresponds from Ministry of Environment Parks regarding the Minister Ariel approval of single use item regulation amendment by law number one two seven seven. Point zero two. Plastic water bottles. Great to see this, this letter here. It sounds like the province has enthusiastically embraced. The District of Taffino's. Plastic. Uh, plastic amendment. Comments from council? Seeing none.
I have a question. Is it only related to water bottles, uh, the soda bottles and juice bottles?
Uh, we'd have to look at the actual amendment, which I don't have right here. Go ahead, Mr. McCall.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor Law, the, this amendment is addition to our single use item regulation. So in addition to the regulations that we currently have. Uh, the minister has approved the amendment to provide the sale of single use plastic water bottles. On meter and less, so staff will be returning to council at a future meeting for the adoption. Uh, of that amendment.
Sure, and Counselor Thomas's question was regarding whether it was just limited to water or other beverages, and I believe it is just water.
Correct, just water.
Any other comments on this? Okay, presentation reports. We have a verbal. Presentation. Mr. Onright. Or financial contribution food bank on the edge report. Services for a presentation. If there is no presentation, we can just ask. I have it here as a verbal, but we can just ask council if they need a presentation on this. No, and this is in response to a request. For financial, a financial contribution to the food bank on the edge. And staff have come back with an amount of thirty nine hundred dollars. Out of general fund contingency. So why don't we just go straight to that since there is no verbal? Would anybody like to speak to this before we read the motion? Counselor Thomas?
Through the chair, it's my understanding that the number three thousand nine hundred came from. The amount that we kept out on the council grants, but since the funding is not coming from council grants, I would be interested in getting them ten thousand.
Uh, okay, we'll look to. Response or response perhaps from staff. Is there ability to respond to that? Counselor Thomas would like to exceed the thirty nine hundred dollars suggested by staff.
Through the chair. There is a possibility of moving to ten thousand dollars. Um, but I would like to point out that at this point we are halfway through. Through the year in terms of contingency. And at this point, we do not know what would be ahead of us in terms of emergencies. That we might face. So considering that this value comes out of the contingency fund. Just wanted to point out that it reduces a bit more the contingency fund that would be available. For the second half of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, comments, questions from council? Counselor Thomas?
I mean, just to speak to that, I understand that there could be unborn things in our future, but I think food security. Is a pretty significant ongoing. You see for many people in the region. I would still be interested in increasing it to the ten thousand if it was something other people were interested in, so.
Well, we can do it two ways. We can hash it out with council. We can make a different motion. We can read this recommendation and then in the recommendation. Debate the number, or we can defer. Staff to come back with the. Further rationale for thirty nine hundred or the possibility of ten thousand or more. So. I'm fairly neutral on this. I'm looking to council for feedback.
I'd be interested in deferring it back to staff to see. Or other items that might come up.
Okay, anybody else?
I do remember that. Very good to stop.
See if they can add a bit more, okay. Counselor Sawyer?
Um, yeah, I. Want to see it go back to staff, I guess, if we're going to go away from the recommended amount. They understand why it was recommended by staff. But given that it's coming out of a different funding source, which isn't tapped out, but it's also not. You know, there's not a ton of room. There could be other things that we're willing to, so there may be a reason why they're holding that on.
Hmm, yeah, there could be very good reason. Counselor Anderson?
Um, yeah, what if we referred the remainder to next year's budget? So we could have a contribution of thirty nine hundred at this point. And then. We could. Debate adding another sixty one hundred to next year's budget. We're only a few months off from. Those discussions beginning. It's another possibility.
Possibility, okay. Counselor Thomas?
Um, if there's a possibility of deferring it to next year, then I would do the thirty nine hundred now. I think they asked for ten thousand because they're intending to. Get past the final steps in the near future rather than the next calendar year. So I'd be. More in favor of me.
Counselor Mast?
I'd agree with that. I think we should award the thirty nine hundred now and defer the rest to staff. You know, I'd also been seeing whether the. Pay parking program would pay the extra.
Okay, we'll tell you what we'll do is we'll, we'll make this recommendation right here if there are no objections and then we'll, we can discuss. Or we can direct staff as we did previously to, to look at. Funding the remainder either through the financial planning process through pay parking. So they can come back with options. Does that sound good to you?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. Okay, well then, do I have a volunteer to read the recommendation?
I move that staff be authorized provide a financial contribution in the amount of three thousand nine hundred dollars to Food Bank on the Edge to support the completion of new. Food bank facility located in Hewlett in response to the letter received on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five attached as appendix one to the staff report. And that the amount be funded from the twenty twenty five general fund contingency.
Second. Sawyer, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, that's, the motion is adopted. And. We've discussed, I think, a verbal request that staff return. Or the remainder of the requested amount from in financial planning process. And look for alternative funding sources as well. Specifically possibly a pay parking, but we'll see. Good. Counselor Anderson?
I'd, I'd be interested to know in. Uh, how much of our contingency fund has been used? Um, if we've spent more than half of it and, and we're halfway through. Then. That might be a little bit tight to take that amount out. But if that was our whole contingency budget and we haven't spent any of it. That's a different scenario. So a little more information around. That contingency budget would be helpful in decision making.
Okay, for next, for.
I was just gonna point out to Counselor Anderson for reference, those numbers are in, if you read down through the attached report. Uh, twenty twenty five fiscal year contingency fund has a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars allocated of two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar value.
We're past halfway. Great.
That's not how I understood it, so.
Is that, well, I think we've got the recommendation before us. We've already, we've adopted the, the recommendation and we're asking staff to come back. With the remainder through the financial planning process. Moving on? Any further comments? Okay. We'll go to ten point two, official community plan amendment by law number one two nine zero dash point one zero one. And this is for third reading. So we do have a presentation?
Uh, I'll just suggest we take a recess for that public hearing before.
What time is it? Uh, quarter two. And this is. Motion, so we'll just take a recess for fifteen and then move into our. Okay, that's fine. We can do that. Okay, a little, a little change up here. We have a. Public hearing scheduled for five o'clock and it must start at five o'clock as advertised. As per the agenda, so. To not risk. Cutting presentation in half. We're gonna recess until five o'clock. All right, I'll mute the mics. It is one minute, okay. So we'll reconvene, Counselor Anderson, and then we'll start the. Start the public hearing exactly at five. It's five o'clock and I am. Calling the public hearing. Calling the public hearing to order. Statement. From the chair. This is the review of public hearing procedures. August twelfth, twenty twenty five, five o'clock, the District of Taffino Official Community Plan Amendment by law number. One two nine zero point zero one twenty twenty five. The public hearing is being held to receive and consider submissions regarding the proposed District of Taffino Official Community Plan Amendment by law. Number one two nine zero. Point zero one twenty twenty five, which proposes to amend the official community plan bylaw to update district of Taffino regulations around increasing staff accommodation. In areas outside the village in future homes areas. The bylaw would make limited residential development permissible outside of these areas only where supported by land use designation policies. Anyone who believes their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw. Will have an opportunity to be heard either by speaking directly. Or through a representative or by submitting written comments. No one will be prevented or discouraged from making their views known. However, it is important that speakers restrict their comments to only those matters contained in the proposed bylaw. As chair, it is my responsibility to ensure that this restriction is honored. No decision will be made at this hearing. The entire proceedings will be considered by the District of Taffino Council at a subsequent meeting. Council's function today is to listen to the views of the public, not debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. However, council members may ask questions of individual speakers to clarify what is being said. This public hearing is the final opportunity. For the public to comment on the proposed file, council is not permitted to receive further submissions once we have proposed this here. Documents received by council relating to the proposed bylaw are available for review in public hearing document book. That was previously available in the district office. It is again available in the Clickwood Sound Community here today and is not to be removed. Written comments submitted during the hearing will be added to the public hearing document book. Written comments during the notice period, you are not required to restate your views urgently today. Personal information such as names and addresses are directly related to. Counsel's consideration of the effects of the proposed bylaw that are being collected under. Section twenty six C of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Questions about how personal information will be used or disclosed can be addressed to the District of the Manager of Legislation Services. To maintain order and to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, our rules of procedure are as follows. To sign up to address council with your comment, please proceed to the podium and begin your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization or another person, please identify the name and address of that organization or person. If you are speaking from prepared remarks, we would appreciate it. If you are joining remotely via Zoom. Open the Q and A function window in the webinar controls from your device, click on the Ask Question tab. And type in your full living name and address. Do not type your comment. Staff member will respond and add your name to the speech list. The chair will call upon each speaker when it is there to hear him to comment. Speakers joining remotely via Zoom. Will be unmuted for the up to five minutes. However, your video function will not be permitted. Please limit remarks and comments to five minutes and to matters contained in the proposed bylaw only. After everyone has spoken once, those wishing to speak again will have an opportunity to sign up again. Council members may ask. Questions of speakers to clarify what has been said. However, no other replies, rebuttals, or additional submissions will be heard without the chair's permission. Thank you. And I have the public hearing summary. Also, August twelfth, twenty twenty five. Community Plan Amendment by law number one two nine zero. Point zero one twenty five. District of Taffino Official Community Plan Amendment by law number one two nine zero point zero one twenty twenty five proposes to amend. District of Taffino Official Community Plan by law number one two nine zero twenty twenty one. To update district of Taffino regulations around increasing staff accommodation in areas outside the village and future homes areas. The bylaw would make limited residential development permissible outside of these areas only where supported by land use designation policies. The amendment bylaw received first and second readings on January twenty eight, twenty five. The public hearing was advertised in the July thirty. Twenty twenty five and August sixth, twenty twenty five additions to the Westerly News and posted on the district notice board and website. Moving on. Three point one, we have a proposed bylaw. It's there for three. There is no presentation, staff presentation or otherwise this time. Three point two, a public notice summary. Three point three and related documents all available and on the agenda. Moving on to item four, written submissions received during the notice period. Mister Welsh. We have received none. None. Well, it's easy. Appliance agent staff presentations, Mister McCall. Update.
None provided, Maryla.
Public input, item six, this chair will call upon those signed up in Zoom and allow up to five minutes per speaker. We have anybody sign up in Zoom?
We can do an open call through Zoom and for members live in the gallery with us, uh, calling once. Calling twice. On three times. No speakers at this time, you know?
Okay, and you open it up for galleries?
In the gallery, calling once and calling twice. On three times. No hands raised.
Okay, well then, item seven is a German. I will move a German, but I do need a second. Mr. Sloman seconds. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Emotions carried. On to. Our regular agenda. Item. And this is moving now appropriately into ten point two. Well.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm hoping to bring this OCP amendment to your third reading. So for a bit of background. Uh, in twenty twenty three, we received two zoning amendments applications from public. For two properties in the ocean interface to allow for staff accommodation. One development is on eleven forty one Pacific Rim Highway, and this would provide district wide staff housing. Thirty seventeen modular buildings with about five units each. The other is at twelve eleven Pacific Rim Highway. This would provide staff housing for the Wiccan Initiative. Uh, using two buildings, two two-story buildings, shared facilities totaling about thirty one beds. So zoning amendments really must be consistent with OCP policy. So the primary tension that we're addressing with this amendment is related to location. So the OCP general policies discourage and prohibit development outside the village port area. However, if you look at some OCP area specific policies, they're supportive. For instance, staff housing is explicitly supported in the ocean interface designation. So key considerations for development outside the village core area really remain the same. We look at infrastructure capacity. We look at hazard risk exposure, things like environment impacts. So it's important to note that the approval of this OCP amendment does not oblige council. To approve any related zoning amendment applications or any subsequent applications. This is simply to provide more clarity within our OTP. So the OCP supports this type of development by prioritizing dense residential growth within. Four hundred meters of multimodal hubs. It encourages below market housing near schools, employment centers, and transit hubs. And you'll see, uh, as I go through this presentation, these two developments that I noted are close to employment centers and transit hubs. Before we move a bit further, I want to, uh, answer a question that was asked at second reading. Regarding tsunami risk and the liability associated with permitting development in known areas prone to inundation. This is what we learned from legal, our legal counsel. Creating policy that allows for housing in known tsunami inundation zones does not pose a legal liability risk to the District of Taffino. So these amendments that we're bringing forward, they're an effort to clarify our OCP policy and avoid any contradictions with legislation in the future. So essentially by clarifying our, our own policy, we would avoid that risk. I want to show this map here. Uh, this, this identifies, um, the parcels that fall under the OCP's ocean interface designation. Just see here in blue. And then I've starred the locations of the two related zoning amendments, uh, in red. As you can see, they're along Pacific Rim Highway, um. Each on the. The parcels related to the two developments that are before us. So the proposed text amendments do not change, do not change the intent of the OCP, rather they aim to clarify. While these amendments were triggered by the two related zoning amendments, their impact is area based. The objective really for these amendments are, one, to improve clear and consistent interpretations of the OCP. Number two, to enable consistency with the OCP regarding consideration of any associated zoning amendments. And number three, to support community housing needs while maintaining overall intent. Of the OCP to limit and discourage growth outside the village. So these are the three text amendments that we are asking to receive third reading today. Um, there's a text addition, as you see, a, a word change and an omission. And by providing these, we, we believe we bring the clarity that's required in order to, to bring about limited development within the ocean interface to, in the case, two cases before us. And other files, uh, to provide for staff housing. I should also mention though that there are pieces within the OCP that will remain, that will ensure that. We can address tsunami risk appropriately. So one in particular that I think is quite important is policy five point one point two point one. And that's to limit development in the ocean interface to reduce exposure to natural hazards such as sea level rise, coastal flooding, tsunami inundation. And this is all to preserve natural features and landscapes and to ensure that the capacity of our current water system is not oversubscribed. So pieces like this will remain. And with that, I have the recommendation before.
Yeah, open up to council for moments. Questions first for Mister Welsh. Questions? Comments? Um, I do have a comment actually, and it, it's steps from first and second reading, and. As I know it was reiterated, uh, you know, the clarification and this, yeah, I believe the previous, uh, presentations, which you were not in tense. And it's for, uh, did state that this was a minor change. I do think it is a significant change, and I do think that the. You know, it does bear from, from the OCP and including dense residential. Um, in, in tsunami inundations zone. So I just want to make that clear that I'm aware of that, uh, but I'm supportive anyway. Uh, that's my only comment. That's my comment. Maybe not to you, but maybe to, to everybody here. I think this is, this is, uh. Uh, it is a significant change, in my opinion, but it's one that seems to be well supported by the community and by council. So just for. My only comment. Seeing no other comments. We can go ahead and, uh, would somebody like to read the recommendation?
I'll move that the District of Taffino Official Community Plan Amendment by law number one two nine zero point zero one twenty twenty five. Be read third time.
Second by Councilor Thomas. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Great, thank you. Ten point three, zoning amendment by law number one three one five twenty twenty two, council. Production. Mister Welsh.
Thank you for this opportunity as well. Uh, to bring this to final reading. So the original application for Woodsmere was received by staff on June first, twenty sixteen. So, uh, as noted by, um, uh. Participant earlier in the meeting, um, we've been working in good faith and diligently with the applicant for, for about ten years since. And so staff I know are excited to arrive at this stage. So I'm presenting on behalf of all of those who have worked on this file before me. We are at final reading. I'm here before you for two reasons. I wanted to obtain final reading of what's known as the Woodsmere development. And the other is to obtain the allocation of water through a water allocation certificate required for this development to go forward. So we're looking at twenty four single family lots accommodating homes with suites. And we're also looking at a four-story fifty five unit market rental apartment building, both of which are somewhat unique typologies for this district and. Um, we've heard lots that these are the type, these are typologies that, that we need. The water allocation that we're looking at is thirty three point one two meters cube per day for those for phase one to. To move. So succinctly, for some relevant background. The application received third reading on December twelfth of twenty twenty three, and since then we've worked, uh, to, to obtain the development covenant. Uh, and have that finalized, and that's been attached at the appendix to. Part of the council agenda package. So the development agreement contains a number of things. Uh, one, it, uh, addresses some of the limited infrastructure capacity. Particularly related to water. Um, and stormwater. Another, it includes a site plan showing the location of future roads, future park, bus stop. And the driveway configuration required for this development. It includes provision for a temporary park as construction activities will impact, uh, the actual park. It outlines how the future park will be serviced and how the District of Taffino will have access. Although the temporary park will be used, uh, until future phases are complete. And it describes the extension of Ailer's Road and how it needs to be addressed through subdivision process. Uh, I should note that that would be a separate agreement. Uh, required with a third party landowner and district, you know, will not be involved in that process. They are to get that done within the, the subdivision phase. It outlines the provision of a bus stop and it outlines the requirement to provide at least four or three bedroom units in the apartment building for phase one. So that's all contained with the development agreement, which, which is in your package. So as I noted, this development is going to require thirty three point one two meters cube per day. Uh, and this is based on schedule one of our limited growth policy. Uh, looks at single family units as well as suites and apartments. That's how we come up and came up with that number. Um, following the approval of this, uh, assuming it would be approved. Now the remaining of water allocation available for developing to Taffino would be that. Be looking at four point six one. Cubes for residential, nine point one two for commercial, industrial, and institutional. And then sixty remaining for to local and First Nation use. So next steps for this development, following a final reading, uh, the applicant would supply, would, would apply for subdivision. Which could take up to two years, but likely less. And through that process, we, we would get our works and services agreement finalized. DCCs would be paid and building permits would then be applied for. So to ensure that water allocation is not withheld, or is not held without performance, the water allocation certificate would expire after two years for. A rezoning application, which is what we have before us, uh, and after two years for building permit, the last development is proven to be substantially underway. With that, we have the recommendations before you.
Excellent. Uh, questions for Mister Welsh?
Mister Chair. I'm just a little confused with the water allocation and how it relates to the, the lots. Like, um. How does that compare to like somebody within our community that has an undeveloped lot that maybe wants to build a, a single family unit? Cause we're allocating water to them.
Through the chair, uh, right now we're looking at, as. Through the chair, uh, right now we're looking at as sort of a lump sum. Um, and it's, it's all parsed out based on how many single family lots are within the development as well as apartment units. And so when you get to building permit phase, that will then sort of have a small allocation for each of those structures and each of those lots. Uh, but all of that would, should total up to the thirty three point uh, that, that I've shown before you.
Maybe just to follow up on that, maybe think what you're going at, uh, Council Slowman is, is, is for instance, there's an empty lot in town uh that somebody is waiting to build on. They need a water allocation certificate. So, um, just for instance, the water allocation goes to the, this development, there's which results in twenty four empty lots. Right? Now do those and twenty four empty lots get uh that water allocation certi, like that water allocation point five eight meters cube, whatever in perpetuity? Uh, and what happens if the remaining water is, uh, goes down to zero? And then who would get the water, the existing lot that exists now waiting to be developed, or would it then stay with the twenty four units until they are developed? Or does that run out for the twenty four units if somebody purchases them? Takes that water allocation certificate and then doesn't build on?
Thank you for that question. Uh, their allocation would expire if they do not build, for instance. So we could look at a development that, um, assuming B P's building permits are applied for within those two years of the rezoning application. Um, you have another two years to substantially start construction. Uh, if, if a lot, a parcel owner did not, uh, commence with substantial construction within those two years after receiving a building permit. They then would have that water allocation rescinded and that, that water would then go back to the queue or the pool. Water that we have available for residential development. And so what that looks like on the ground is some water may be freed up for other, other developers in the future. If that type, if that happens, that scenario happens, but that also then impacts the face of this development, for instance. We may have missing teeth, for instance, as I might call it. Um, if construction does not commence in, in the fashion that's laid out in our limits to growth policy.
Thank you. That is what I was saying. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for that. Great. And I do believe, just for clarification as well, I do believe the limits to growth policy did account for undeveloped lots that exist now residential. Did it not?
Yes, that's, yeah, okay. Late, late in demand is what we call it.
Late in demand, that's right. Any other questions for Mr. Wells on this one? Yeah, sure.
I just had a, a question that I just didn't really understand. Um, in the, in the documents here, it said, due to the location and lot size of the proposed housing, the applicant may be eligible for fifty percent reduction on the single lot D C Cs. I just don't understand that. Why, why would, why would we give fifty percent of this scale?
Through the chair, we have various pieces within our D C C bylaw that provide discounts based on the type of development. Uh, in this case, uh, it might be, um, I'd have to look into the actual pieces, but it might be related to the type of development in terms of its scale or its ability to be considered more entry level. Um, there's, there's reduction for such things like that, more affordable, I think it's.
And that's written right in policy?
It's written right in the policy. So if you'd like to see all of the, the discounts that we provide, it's in our D C C bylaw.
No, go ahead.
Um, and then, uh, I didn't see it anywhere in there, maybe I missed it, but uh, it's my understanding that all short term rental permissions would be removed from these properties.
Through the chair, I believe that is correct. Yes, that came up second and third reading.
Right.
Any other questions for clarity? Comments?
Just happy to see it going up. You know, it's two thousand fifteen, my first call in council, so it's been a long time.
Okay.
My comments really minor, but I wanted to say that I appreciated the temporary records being in there and being the description.
Yes.
Thank you. I know my colleagues were targeted.
Yeah, we have. Yep, that's right. It's a, it's always a, uh, it's always a debate, give and take, but it's good. Great. Well, I see no other questions for clarity or comments, so we can go right to the recommendation. Who would like to read their?
I move that District of Tavino zoning amendment by law number one three one five twenty twenty two be adopted.
Okay.
Master, any for the comments? All in favor? Not opposed, motion is carried.
I move that thirty three point one two meters cube day per day of water is allocated to eight twenty five Campbell Street. President, you chose Tavino zoning amendment by law number one three one five twenty twenty two.
Master, any for the comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Not opposed, motion is carried. Moving on to ten point four, pay parking program surplus allocation.
Senator on mayor and council. We are going to look at, uh, parking reserve as it stands, uh, right now. Um, the agenda for, uh, this afternoon, we will look at the background of, uh, parking reserve followed by surplus distribution. Uh, the reserve at a glance, right now, uh, the usage, uh, at this point, um, the trends moving forward as well as the, the balance. Uh, looking back, in, uh, June, uh, twenty twenty one, uh, the pay parking program was implemented. Uh, followed, uh, by the same June, but in twenty twenty three, two years later, uh, by the establishing the surplus distribution of the pay parking program. And in February twenty twenty four, we had the pay parking reserve fund by law, uh, being adopted. In terms of the surplus distribution, um, the way it is established, um, uh, half of that value is set up as unallocated values as of now. Twenty five percent, uh, it is, um, moved into the recreation facilities reserve fund. Fifteen percent into the roads infrastructure reserve fund. And ten percent into the pay parking reserve fund. And the S R X over there refers to the fact that those are minimum values. Looking at the last four years, um, in terms of the parking surplus. Uh, the first, uh, first year in twenty twenty one, we had, uh, hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Uh, in twenty twenty two, uh, the jump was substantial, uh, at about almost hundred and sixty percent. Two and two hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. Um, twenty twenty three, we've seen a slight reduction of, of three percent out of the previous year. At two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. Followed by last year again with an increase, uh, from previous year of, uh, hundred and thirteen percent to a total of five hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. The usage so far, there were only two projects, um, main projects for which, um, the values were used for. Uh, two years ago in twenty twenty three, we, uh, had hundred and ten thousand dollars being used for the Neal Street and Village Green Improvement Project. And that's, uh, referred to a replacement of an aging, uh, water main. Also replacement of the racket courts, equipment and so forth. Um, last year in twenty twenty four, we had the second project that, uh, used funds from this reserve. Um, it was hundred and fifty five thousand three fourteen and seventy seven cents for the weekend in a school ball time on field. Which, uh, included the relocation and updating of the baseball field. Um, bring it all together, um, what we can see on the screen is again, the totals for, uh, the fiscal years, uh, for the last four fiscal years. As well as the breakdown as per the allocation mentioned in the previous, um, slides. Um, also included are the two projects that were used uh, the values for. Um, and to bring the attention to the, to the bottom of, of the screen, we can see a total of, uh, one point two seven million over, over the last, um, four years. With six hundred and thirty five into the unallocated, uh, group. Hundred and twenty seven under the pay parking reserve. Um, as the two projects, uh, were coming out of the recreation facilities, uh, that balance sits at fifty two thousand. And the roads in, roads infrastructure fund is at hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Looking ahead, we can, uh, we can see that for twenty twenty five, we have a slight drop in the forecast for the parking surplus, uh, from twenty twenty four at five hundred and fifty two thousand. That is mostly due to uncertainties of, uh, of, of, uh, of the, uh, current, uh, economic situation. Um, we are projecting an increase in twenty twenty six of twenty three percent to a six hundred and eighty thousand. And from that point, it's, uh, it's, uh, almost a flat line for the twenty twenty seven to twenty twenty nine fiscal. Also, what I put on the screen is, um, the revenue as it sits right now, um, I think it's a good value to look at. So basically that represents, uh, second quarter of twenty twenty five June thirtieth versus, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. And looking at the three main, um, parking, uh, revenue sources. Uh, we can see a, a, a good story here where, uh, we do have an increase in the revenue. Um, for municipal lots, we see a thirty percent increase, uh, of, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five versus June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Um, an eight percent increase for the beaches lots. And for the downtown lots, we see a twenty seven percent, um, increase. And overall, uh, putting all those values together, the value shows an increase of thirteen percent of Q two twenty twenty five versus Q two twenty twenty four. Again, this is the revenue, um, and, uh, the surplus will be something to be, um, looked at at the end of the fiscal year.
Mr. Andrew, just a question. I, I understood that, I understand from our director of community services, Director of Community Services, that, that Q three is also trending significantly higher. So my question is, if the, uh, revenue, Q two revenue of twenty twenty five is higher than twenty twenty four, and it appears that the projected revenues for Q three are also higher. Why is there a projected decrease of seven?
Um, that is through the chair, that is the value, um, that it's included in the adopted financial plan, the five hundred and fifty two thousand. And the minus seven percent, uh, represents a drop from twenty twenty. So it's, uh, is the forecasted?
From the financial plan, but not from what we're seeing so far?
Not from the actuals, yes.
So we're actually gonna see?
We're gonna see the trends are, 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 are showing the, a good story here, uh, meaning that by the end of the year, we might end up with a, with a higher parking surplus than five hundred and fifty two. Looking at the, uh, initial values as of June thirtieth.
Okay, so just, we just wanted to clarify that. That's just so that the negative seven percent is actually from last year's financial planning process, not actually from Q two or Q three actual, uh, revenues.
True, that is correct.
Thanks. Uh, go ahead. That's sure.
Um, yeah, I had a question on that too, but I was wondering if there was a reflection of the projected values from last year before we, um, because I believe we'd extended the dates on the parking program out a little bit last year. Is that, is not reflected in the prior planning?
Through the chair, um, it, it was, it was a, uh, a forecasted value established, um, around the form last year of five hundred fifty two. We try to be conservative about the value, uh. We are welcoming a, a higher value in, in that regards. But we try to be, to be conservative and, uh, the intention is to, to have a value that we can, we can stand here and say that we will achieve that if we are getting a bit more, uh, as the trends are showing, uh, that is, that is a good story.
Okay, thank you.
Super. Carry on. Thank you.
Um, and, um, really what we are looking at is, is the balances as of end of twenty twenty four. As shown before, uh, in the previous two, two slides before, um, the three, um, reserves and funds, uh, they do have the minimums being allocated as twenty five percent, fifteen percent and ten percent. Um, but what am I bringing in front of, of council today is, uh, the unallocated value of six hundred and thirty five thousand. Uh, as it sits right now, um, uh, being unallocated. Um, the idea behind it is, is allocating this value towards the three reserves and funds, uh, that are on the right hand side of, of that value. Um, but, uh, because it's an unallocated value and the minimum values were already allocated. The remainder of six hundred and thirty five thousand, it's, um, it's for the council to decide which percentage, which values are going to, to the three reserves and funds.
So Mr. Andre, are you asking us to do this now?
Um, I can come, uh, forward with a written report, uh, in the, in one of the future, um, meetings. Um, but this is more as a, as a, as informational and, um, looking for direction.
Looking for feedback? Okay, I think it's great. So, uh, okay, is this the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Great. So let's go back to that. Uh, I have an opinion, but I'm gonna share my opinion last. So why don't we go down the, uh, Council Anderson, we're gonna start with Council Anderson. Uh, you can start with the questions or you can start with the comment. And, uh, Mr. Andre is looking for direction from staff or from council on allocating, reallocating the unallocated amounts.
Okay, um, I see that we, we've only spent from the recreation facilities and that reserve sits at the lowest. So my sort of first take on it is to at least replace that money. Maybe put about half of the unallocated there. And some towards the pay parking and some towards roads, but keep a little bit back in the unallocated. So maybe about fifty percent into recreation facilities. Uh, fifteen, twenty percent of it each to roads and pay parking and the remainder just to hold back unallocated in case we whatever, want to put it in any particular spot later. And then we will still have more revenue coming in next year to replace some of that unallocated. So that's my idea. Okay?
Excellent. How's your big master?
That's a nice goal to have. Um, I'd be interested to know on the infrastructure side, if we got any demands coming up.
I'd be interested to know on the infrastructure side if we got any demands coming up shortly, so using the uh. Lick it waste, banter, and water issues, because that might dictate how much I would like to take joke towards infrastructure. Uh, certainly agree with uh putting more money towards recreation and. You know, on the back of my mind, I'm thinking, you know, we've, you know, we've got to make a point on the multi-plex or whatever, so I'd like to have some money there. So, the pool or whatever. Uh, and just a little bit, it's a big part of the reserve. You know, maybe ten thousand. Maybe uh if we could uh use some of the money for the food bank issue.
Counselor Thomas.
Um, I would. Struggle to assign that money without knowing what projects were coming up ahead of us. Um, it'd be nice if we could look at this concurrently with um maybe some of the projects that show up during the budget process. And I don't want to rain on anybody's parade in regards to possibly funding um. The food bank through this or water infrastructure, but I have pulled up the bylaw, and we do have very prescriptive uses of what we're allowed to spend this money on. Um, and neither of those would fall into this, so our restricted uses are recreation facilities, recreation equipment, road sidewalks, and muck infrastructure, parks, facilities, transit, and parking infrastructure. So, um. Do you mind all of that when we start dreaming of how to spend our unallocated funds?
So unallocated is does not mean uh open ended? It's, okay, good, thank you for that. Um. That's sure. Sorry, Counselor Swamin, let's keep going this way, and then I'll go last.
Um, I uh kind of agree with what Counselor Anderson and Counselor Master were saying earlier is. Um, I like the idea of replacing what we've spent in the recreation facilities and keeping that account. Right, so I I like the round number of fifty percent of it going to that. And then, um, yeah, I hear what uh. Counselor Thomas was saying about, you know, it's it's hard to allocate the remainder with um. Oh, not without knowing what might come up, so. I guess maybe I'd be comfortable with like fifteen percent into each of the other accounts, and then maybe leave the remainder in. Unallocated, I don't know, or is that account not touchable?
Good, good question from Mr. Andre, and I see your hand.
I have a question.
Uh, sure, is um the unallocated, it can remain unallocated and used for the things that Counselor Thomas mentioned within policy?
The chair, um it it still applies the the conditions that Counselor Thomas mentioned. Um, and the unallocated value comes in front of council, constantly.
Okay, so.
So just to get your you uh agree with Counselor Anderson that fifty percent go back into the recreation facilities and the dividend rest up as uh.
Yeah.
Remain unallocated or perhaps going to those.
Yeah.
Okay, and you have a question?
Yeah, I actually wanted to ask if I was understanding that correctly, because I was concerned, um. Is the pay parking reserve the only thing that is restricted to these, and then the allocated is actually open ended? I'm just worried that I've misunderstood this, and that I might be leading everyone else astray, but or is the unallocated um under this whole reserve program? You might have just answered that.
Through the chair, um it the unallocated value applies to the conditions of the three funds, and uh. It it relates to capital.
Um, yeah, I'd like to see significant amounts go into recreation facilities, roads, and infrastructure. Knowing that I believe we have the um potential paving or repairs that gives some extension on the books. Or we spoke about it.
Gibson.
Like.
Gibson Road.
Yeah, like the gravel hill, like the offshore parking, um.
Absolutely, through the chair, that's on the books for design in twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
So just seeing projects like that coming up, they'll be significant, as well as um. You know, the the bike park that was lost, which I. Don't believe is currently on the books, but, you know, that would be a a great uh thing to put that these resources towards significant, sorry, the same way like the ball field, like something. Um, it'd be really easy to put a finger in.
Yeah. I have a comment, just can I finish? Are you finished?
That's it.
Okay, uh, did this, I I do recall council having significant discussion, and this is very intentional. To use pay parking for these things, and those restrictions were put in place on purpose, so that pay parking. Unallocated or excess pay parking or pay parking at all, uh wouldn't go into things that would otherwise. Uh, be funded by taxation or capital infrastructure levy, et cetera, et cetera. So, so uh and noting that Counselor Anderson has noted that the recreation. Fund has been used extensively and has dropped down, I think that shows that. That uh and I think that we also was reflected in council's discussion. Uh, that that recreation facility or recreation reserve was significantly important, and that's why it was uh. Put at a higher value, and um I think I agree, it should be. Uh, at least topped up, if not more, because that's that's what's being drawn down, and none of the other ones have been touched over the last. Little while, which also shows that uh they're probably at this time. A little less uh needed, so I think fifty percent, I'd be happy with fifty percent, that's what you're at least going into the recreation facilities reserve fund. I don't think anything needs to go in the pay parking reserve fund, I'm not sure what that even does, but uh the roads and infrastructure I could see uh. See getting a a bulk of the rest, because that is, as Counselor Sawyer points out, a high need. Uh, for the community, and we see the muck being used extensively. Successfully, and it makes our town also fabulous, so that's my comment, and I see Counselor Anderson, this is end up.
Um, yeah, the, I think the pay parking reserve is, it's important. To grow our our pay parking program and to improve it, so um. You know, this is this is providing pretty good funding now and kind of solid, and it's gonna get more um. More regular, what we expect out of it as time goes by, hopefully, and as 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 we develop other projects. We may be using that fund to put in parking spots or other parking amenities or infrastructure. So, um although we don't have any particular projects, it may be used as part of another project. To improve or maybe expand the pool of parking that that could be pay parking. And help grow what the revenue, what the revenue generation um would be out of it, so. I I believe that's that's an important reserve, and and we all know that those kind of projects don't come cheap, so. Um, a hundred and twenty seven thousand, not go very far to paving many parking spots, but but there are are many streets into Fino. That could still use parking improvements, and then it's also um. May be used in the future for the infrastructure to support running the system as well, so. I thi- I think that's an important thing, we just don't have any projects particularly earmarked, so. That's that's my idea of the pay parking reserve anyway.
Yes, maybe just a comment for clarity, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh if you go back a couple of slides, uh this is the. Allocation of the unallocated portion, but every year there will be a minimum addition to all three reserves.
Through the chair, that is correct.
And so that one twenty seven will grow whether or not we put in more money from the unallocated portion, so. If uh just for maybe for interesting dis- discussion, we say that uh in twenty twenty five, the uh. Revenue, the net revenue, say, is seven hundred thousand, what is the percentage that goes into each of those? Let's just use that as a round number, you can just go back one more. But a couple more. There we go, there we go, so uh say there's seven hundred thousand dollars in net revenue. Uh, three hundred and fifty thousand will go into the unallocated values, and whatever we decide, or you decide. On our behalf for the unallocated uh values that will go up. The recreation facilities reserve would go up twenty five percent regardless of what we do today, and so would roads, infrastructure, and pay parking reserve at ten percent, so. Probably about seventy, sixty five, seventy thousand to pay parking uh at the end of this year.
Through the chair, using that value of seven hundred, um that is correct, three fifty will go into unallocated, which will go, we will come here again, uh a from now. Um, the recreation comes at one seventy five thousand. And um. Roads um comes at one oh five thousand. And the pay parking is obviously seventy thousand.
That's using my optimistic. Okay, okay, that's good, all right. And you uh is uh last round for council, great comments if any, for uh Mr. Andre. Last chance. There's no uh no motions on table or anything like that, no recommendations, so you have what you need?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, no bylaws, no unfinished business.
Business initiated by council members, anything committees, external appointments, verbal reports from council members?
Anything, nothing, all right. Question period, Mr. Recall, open call for questions for council.
Thank you, Mayor Law, I will now do an open call for questions to both members public present in the gallery and those participating online. For those in the gallery who wish to speak, please raise your hand. There's anyone attending online via Zoom that would like to ask a question, you can do so now using the Q and A function. Before asking a question, you want to state your name, your address, the agenda item you're speaking to, now do a call, calling once. Calling twice. Three times, no questions at this time, you're off.
Super, then I will, uh actually, would anybody like to move us into the close with the recommendation?
You sounded like you wanted to.
No, I was gonna, then I thought, oh, no. You, oh, whatever, I I don't want to.
I move that meeting be closed to the public pursuit of sections ninety one A C and ninety two B of the community charter to discuss matters relating to. Personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position of an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality. Or another position according to the municipality, labor relations or other employee relations. With consideration of information received and held in confidence related to their negotiations between the municipality and the government, provincial government. Or the federal government or both, or between a provincial government or the federal government or both, and a third party.
Second way, Counselor Thomas, any further comments, all in favor? Not opposed, motions carried, okay, we'll take a little recess and move to the close.